Good evening, everyone. Welcome to ordinary council meeting. I declare the meeting open at five thirty P M. I'll start with the first item of agenda acknowledgement. We, the Greater Shepparton City Council, begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land, which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture, and we acknowledge the memory of the ancestors. Item number two is privacy notice. This public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website, along with the official minutes of this meeting. Item number three, any apologies? We have nil today. Item number four, declarations of conflict of interest. Councillors, is there any declaration of conflict of interest with respect to the agent item today? Yes, councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish to declare that I do have a direct conflict of interest with item seven point seven, the Maud Street Mall precinct, the final concept design. I have a direct family business within them all.
Thank you very much, councillor O'Keefe. We'll now move on to item number five, confirmation of minutes of previous meeting. There's a recommendation on page one. Would someone please confirm the meeting of the previous meetings? Councillor Hazleman?
Happy to move the minutes to the ninth of May twenty twenty and the second of June twenty twenty. Council meetings as circulated be confirmed.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Oriswari?
I'll put the recommendation as, second the recommendation is put by councillor Hazleman.
Thank you. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Item number six, public question time. It's nil. You don't have any questions today? No. Thank you. Councillors, we now move on to page number two. Item number seven point one, public toilet strategy, including submissions during consultation. There's a recommendation on page two. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Would a councillor, Summer?
Thank you, Mayor Abdullah. I'd like to move the recommendation as a motion on page two, but includes some dot points with that, if possible. One that reads that the section under fittings and fixtures on page seventeen of the public toilet strategy be amended to read, soap dispensers and the like should be installed within central business districts and at appropriate locations that are secure and less likely to be vandalised, and that soap be promptly installed at the Maud Street Public Toilet that services on Central. So they're just add-ons to the recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Do I have a second? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you very much. I'd like to second that, please.
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe. Just before we start the debate, want to clarify then in the executive summary on page two, the public toilet strategy was last adopted by council in two thousand and thirteen. That's what's written. And I've been advised by Mr Peter Harriet that the strategy needs to be replaced by policy. So it's actually the public toilet policy was last adopted by council in two thousand and thirteen. So that's a little clarification. With that, I would invite councillor Summer to speak to the motion.
I'll speak to the strategy itself first before the dot points, because it has been a long time coming, obviously, since two thousand and thirteen. And I'd like to thank yourself, Mayor Abdullah, for helping to get this back on the table after being dormant that long. So, um, public toilets have always been fairly contentious and can't really be overstated in terms of importance. We've got quite a few parents with young children, as well as elderly and disabled people who require urgent prompt access to these facilities. So being able to access clean, safe and functional toilets can be a decider of whether you visit our CBD. So it makes good economic strength sense to have a strategy like this. It's incredibly detailed, sets out safe positioning for the actual cubicles, adult change table provision, gender neutral options, ventilations. It even recommends that dark route be used for when we remove graffiti. Then you can't see it in between the bricks, which is quite clever. And page thirteen says even toilet signs can be used as an opportunity for public art. So it's a great strategy. Um, it does also support the use of existing structures. It's a shame we didn't have this adopted back when the Queen's Garden toilets were abolished in nineteen thirty's building and they had more cubicles than our space age loop. But that's another matter. Um, it also recommends that public toilets outside CBD areas be located no further than fifteen minutes drive apart, which I am hoping that gives weight to getting a public toilet on the Midland Highway between Shepherd and Benella. Many dry holding legs together as a kid. And even two submitters brought this up during public consultations. So hopefully we can lobby the crowds to get that done. So we've got this detailed and really workable document that does offer guidelines towards best practice in public toilets. It's overdue and I'm really thrilled to be voting on it. We just need to make sure this is properly followed. But in regards to those dot points, if I've got time, I just think soap is a basic and fundamental requirement for the central business district public toilets. Mother and nurse, obviously, public health is important. We need to teach our kids good hand hygiene and it's never more important than during a pandemic. If you're one of those people who carry around the little hand sanitizer, it's good on you, wonderful, but not everybody does that. It should be encouraged for those education strategies take time to roll out. So we need to encourage proper hand washing at every opportunity and the public have said it, the media have said it. So we're going to do it, hopefully.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor Abdullah, and thank you, councillor Summer. Look, it's been really interesting to particularly my term on council. I'd say we have had quite a few new toilet blocks installed. We've had the lake, the new one at the lake. We've had under the tower, which is fantastic, and the one that came out. So we're certainly moving forward with what we've had in the past, what we now have. So yes, we obviously need to make sure that we can offer the best of quality, you know, facilities to our municipality. So it was great reading back on the strategy, though, that, you know, the community have stepped up and have highlighted some other new sites, which we have obviously added due to community consultation, including the Craig Miller Lakes at Marupna, the Recreation Reserve, Shepherd and the Eastern Midland Highway, the Lake Bart, Tchurra and the Australian Botanical Gardens. And most of those, you know, areas are becoming very busy, particularly Australian Botanical Gardens. So it'll be great to certainly look at that. And the original documents proposed also extended hours, so from eight A M to eight P M operating hours. This has been changed to daylight hours. So yeah, there's some changes going on, but it's certainly a very important topic and it's certainly facilities that we need to maintain. We need to offer the best of service to our municipality. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Next is item number seven point two on page number five. Lighthouse Brigade Memorial, proposed site location. There's a recommendation on page five. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Sutton?
I would like to move the motion as listed on page. The council resolved to adopt the northwest corner of Queen's Gardens as a new site for the Light Horse Brigade Memorial, featuring Sir Mary Boucher, thus superseding a previous resolution of the council from the meeting on the twenty first of February twenty seventeen, where the location of Monash Park was chosen for the Sir Mary Boucher memorial.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Do I have a second? Councillor Giovinazzi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a bit of history. Brigadier Sir Mary Boucher, he led the fourth and the twelfth Light Horse Brigade in October nineteen seventeen at Bushiba, after which he was mentioned in dispatches three times and awarded the distinguished service order for his leadership and bravery. He was also a statesman humanitarian politician, being a member for the Golden Valley. And he served as a deputy premier in nineteen thirty five, nineteen thirty six. And this has come to tact, council tonight, as a previous site in Monash Park has been deemed unsuitable due to traffic safety risks, lack of appropriate parking and lack of disability access. The statue is unable to be placed into the Shepherd and Memorial Park precinct due to memorial protocols. The statue is now in its final status of being built. So the Sir Mary Boucher Advisory Committee, together with council officers, viewed other sites in Shepherd and then found the new site on the northwest corner of the Queen's Gardens to be most suitable for the statue. So I'm recommending that this goes through now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Councillor Giovinazzi, do you want to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor. As councillor Sutton mentioned, back in two thousand and ten, the Mary Boucher Advisory Committee was established to determine the design of the Mary Boucher statue and its location, and its location following advice from a then state member, Jeanette Powell, that she had secured funding for the statue. Over that period, there's been much discussion and community consultation as to the perfect location. Back in two thousand and seventeen, council moved the motion to rescind an earlier decision to locate the statue in Queen's Gardens in preference for Monash Park. Further consultation with the R S L and others is now recommended to revert to the original location of Queen's Gardens. Queen's Gardens is a more appropriate location for the statue, honoring Sir Mary Boucher and his heroic exploits in a time of war.
Thank you, councillor Giovinazzi. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Yes, councillor Patterson?
Yes, I'd just like to congratulate the R S L and others on that committee. They've put a lot of work in over a long time. Two thousand and eight it all started and they've stuck to their guns, literally, and hope it'll be up there in not too distant future. And it's a credit to all involved. He was a wonderful man that did a lot in war and out of war for the country and he should certainly be recognised.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Okay, now we now go, yes, councillor Summer?
I would like to speak to the motion. I was going to foreshadow a motion that we go back to public consultation. That was because we went to public consultation and it ultimately changed our decision on the location. Therefore, it would make sense that we go back again rather than just going over the top of that process. But it does seem like ring around the rosy. We've done this a few times now and councillors seem pretty confident and happy with this location. I personally think it's a fine spot. It ticks all the boxes in terms of prominence and it's close to the Wall Memorial. It's close to where the Anzac Parade goes. It looks across to our public arts at council buildings. We'll have to get rid of that large pine tree there or palm tree there, but whether people are particularly attached to that, I'm not sure. I think it'll complement the Indigenous William Cooper statue that's in there. I mean, we've seen how successful that statue is already and this could highlight both statues in terms of visitation and get them. It's a beautiful spot. So yeah, let's just take some leadership on this and get it done because personally, we've been waiting that long. It's still in construction. There's no urgency about it, but there's consulting and there's overkill. So let's just do it.
Thank you, councillor Summer. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Next is item number seven point three on page. Page ten. This is item seven point three, contract number two zero zero nine, design and construction group five pedestrian bridge and associated works. There's a recommendation on page ten. Would a councillor please move a motion? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, I will read it. It's not that big. Except the tender submitted by Flegwood Urban Weatherall Park, New South Wales for contract number two double oh nine, design and construction of Route Five Pedestrian Bridge and association works, the lump sum price is seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars, including G S T. And number two, authorize the chief executive officer to sign and seal a contact contract document.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Do I have a second? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you. I'd like to second that recommendation, please, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, very excited about this. I'm privileged to be able to chair River Connect and River Connect is responsible for our pathways. You will see, or the community will see, a lot of pathways rolled out in the next few years. And this is the most major piece of infrastructure we've had. It will connect up Lincoln Drive to Botanical Gardens and provide a beautiful walk through the bush and across the Broken River and into the Botanical Garden. So I highly recommend it. It's a unique designed bridge that come in well and truly under what we estimated it might be. It's a suspension bridge, not unlike the one that's over the Golden behind Aquamove. And it certainly will be a piece of infrastructure we'll be able to use and open up a whole new area of Shepherd and for bushwalking, walking and accessing the Botanical Gardens. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. The shared path upgrades for the Route Three and Route Five has received funding from the Builder Building Better Regions Fund and Regional Development Victoria. So that's a great help. And also, just a reminder that the tender is for design and to construct as well. So the contract covers both. So it is very exciting. It's certainly a quite historic bridge that will be put up for the community and to, you know, connect better connectivity to the Botanical Gardens. We're noticing a lot of people are getting outdoors at the moment and I'm sure that's going to continue. Anything that's going to make it more interesting and particularly to connect to, you know, other interesting areas for the community will be fantastic. So it is very exciting. I was really thrilled when I saw this one, you know, coming forward and now that it's, you know, coming to fruition, it's going to be something really fantastic for the community.
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe. Would a councillor like to speak against the motion? Would a councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Hazleman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I think one of the success stories of Shepherd and over the years is how the shared path network has grown along the river across to Marutna. They're used by, all of our community loves the shared path network to Kids Town. On any given weekend, they're used extensively. And during the week, you see people, recreational walkers, cyclists, just people enjoying it. They're, as I said, a great success story. One of the challenges has always been, once you get down to Lincoln Drive, the expense and the issue of getting across the Broken to access that part of the river. If you go on further on Lincoln Drive, you can get down into the path network around Kaila Lakes, which is fantastic. But this provides opportunity to the future to link up with the proposed walking paths down through the Seven Creeks Estate, down almost as far as Mitchell Road eventually with developments that are occurring there. And that's going to be a fantastic community asset well into the future that in effect, you'll be able to walk, cycle, run, whichever, from as far Jordan's been in a bit further north, in the north, to well down south. It's a great community asset and this project opens up a raft of new possibilities for expansion.
Thank you, councillor Hazleman. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Yes, councillor Summer?
Getting pretty excited about this now to hearing what everyone's saying about it. I know I did have a lot of community support as well from obviously gardening enthusiasts and running clubs. So I do want to support the bridge. I do wonder if we should be investing too much out in these botanical gardens. It seems a bit ad hoc. I know we've had a lot of investments out there already, but whether or not there's been a formal assessment of that landfill site, whether it's appropriate, I don't know. It would probably involve O H S, E P A, Environment Management just to get out there and make sure that it is, I guess, safe. We don't know the whole cost of filling that huge structure with plants. We don't know how much it's going to cost to maintain every year. So it's great that we're investing to try and get tourists out there, but without that whole of life business plan, is it really the right spot? I want to get behind the gardens. I definitely, I am behind the paths, but I want to get behind the gardens. But it's really hard to do that without all the costings. So I don't want to end up with another white elephant. So I just thought I'd flag that.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to make some?
Madam Mayor, could I clarify some points there?
Yes, please.
In relation to the integrity of the landfill, I'd like to make this statement that we have invited the E P A to inspect that landfill. We have asked them as to whether a section fifty-three audit, the most formal audit, is required of that landfill. The answer in writing was no. This is not a licensed landfill. This is an old landfill, however, that is subject to a management plan. And the E P A are well aware of that and suggested that we do a voluntary audit under the provisions of the Act. And we've done that, submitted that to the E P A and the E P A have responded. We have been doing six monthly inspections in alignment with that management plan. And that is everything that we're entitled to do or required to do in relation to the E P A. And the site has been managed quite well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Peter Harriet, for this clarification. Okay, so councillor Adam, yes, councillor Summer? Are you? You want to say something? I can't hear you.
Just to clarify, will councillors have access to those documents in future?
Councillor Summer, can you take this matter offline? It is, it is a bit, it's a bit of a deviation from the original recommendation and the motion. Thank you.
Okay.
Councillor Adam, did you raise your hand to speak to the motion? Or councillor Patterson, do you want to say something? I'll go to councillor Patterson and then councillor Adam. I believe councillor Patterson wants to clarify something.
Yes, so as the movement of the motion, I'm not sure whether councillor Summer has spoken for or against. So I don't know whether I get to write a reply. The simple answer is it's a path network that does go to Botanical Gardens and it's another path that will lead from Botanical Gardens back to Marutna. So it is a whole process of connecting your pass up.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Thank you. I'll go back to councillor Adam. Do you want to speak to the motion?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. I just want to bring to the attention of councillors and to councillor Summer and anyone else who may be listening that almost one point one million dollars of this has been funded by the Better Building Regions Fund and also R D V Victoria. So I think we should thank them for the absolute bulk of this money. And to say it potentially could be a white elephant, I think is, yeah, inexplicable to me. How could you even say that? The fact that this is linking two areas that have been screaming out to be linked. The Botanical Gardens, we've spent a lot of money, a lot of effort, a lot of time and a lot of people have devoted practically decades of their lives to that project. And now to finally get it linked to the rest of Greater Shepherd and to a degree and an easy link to the new Sam and all the other activities that are happening down in the CBD. I think it's a remarkable project, remarkable bridge and costing us hardly anything at all. So I just want to make the point of mentioning that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Would any other councillor like to speak to the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Okay, so next item, item number seven point four. This is about contract number one eight nine five, design of signalisation, landscape and upgrade of Wyndham Street and John Street, Shepparton variation. There's a recommendation on page fourteen. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Giovinazzi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation on page fourteen. States the council approved payment of contract variation number six, the contract one eight nine five, design of signalisation, landscape and upgrade of Wyndham and Fitzjohn Street, Shepherd and, with a value of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars, which includes G S T, and authorize the C E O to approve payment of any additional variations up to a value of ten thousand dollars required to complete the project.
So do you want to clarify something?
That's different to the motion.
Do you want councillor Giovinazzi? Okay. Councillor Giovinazzi, do you want to repeat item number, point number two? I think there's some in the figures that you have quoted.
Authorized the C E O to approve payment of any additional variations up to a value of twenty thousand dollars required to complete the project.
Including G S T. Is that all right? All right, thank you. Now, do I have a second? Councillor Oriswari? Thank you, councillor Giovinazzi. Would you like to, sorry, I didn't.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I support the recommendation as put now the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Giovinazzi, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. It's a bit crook when the eyes are failing, even though you're wearing gloves. I'll try to improve in the future. Madam Mayor, this motion is to agree to contract variation for the Wyndham Street Fitzjohn Street intersection. The motion is required, this variation will exceed the variation limit of thirty thousand dollars as per council's procurement policy of projects worth between fifty and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It is interesting to note that the variation is at the behest of Regional Roads Victoria. You had originally approved the previous plan, but a new responsible officer of Regional Roads Victoria didn't agree with that original plan and requested changes, which hence the variation has occurred. Council is seeking funding from the government and is successful. This variation cost will be shared by Regional Roads Victoria as the works are at their request.
Thank you, councillor Giovinazzi. Councillor Oriswari, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Would any councillor like to speak for, against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Hazleman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, a very brief statement. It is somewhat disappointing to get so far through the project planning stage and to have one of the project partners, if you like, change the rules of the goalpost at the last minute, incurring additional expense delay and messing around with the contract. I'm pretty sure that the views that could have been brought forward a lot earlier in the process and dealt with accordingly.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak for the motion? No, all right. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Next is item seven point five, Australian Botanic Gardens, Shepherd and, distribution of section eighty-six, committee of management and recommendation for advisory committee. There's a recommendation on page nineteen. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Adam? You're on mute. Could you unmute yourself, please?
If you prefer that, yes, certainly. I'm just trying, I'm just trying my best. Sorry, I lost my point.
Page nineteen?
Yes, page nineteen. Okay, I just want to read the wording, sorry. Um, page nineteen. We can all talk about ourselves until I find this, page nineteen.
It's item number seven point five, Australian Botanic Gardens.
Yeah, here we are. I'm getting very close. Sorry, Madam Mayor.
I did afternoon. No one did that.
Um, no one's got anything better to do. Here we go. Um, sorry. Uh, goodness gracious. Right, yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would certainly love to move the motion on, or the recommendation on page nineteen. Now that I've seen it's rather large, um, I will read it.
We'd like it read.
I'm sure you would and you will get it read. I think it's important that we do this. The recommendation is that the council dissolve the Australian Botanic Gardens Special Committee effective immediately. Uh, item one point one, uh, or point one point one, acknowledge the contribution made by the members of the Australian Botanic Gardens Special Committee. One point two is revoke Greater Shepparton City Council instrument delegation Australian Botanic Gardens Special Committee adopted by council on seventeenth of October, two thousand seventeen, effective immediately. Point two, establish an Australian Botanic Gardens Special Advisory Committee for advice on the continued development, promotion and ongoing recording of the plant collection for the gardens. Two point one, adopt the Australian Botanic Gardens Shepparton Advisory Committee terms of reference. Two point two, advertise for nominations for members of the Australian Botanic Gardens Special Advisory Committee. And finally, point three, note the intent for a council or to represent council on the Australian Botanic Gardens Advisory Committee.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Do I have a second? Councillor Sutton?
I would like to second that um, motion as it's read out by um, the Adam.
Thank you. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, um. Obviously, uh, the rules have changed in respect to the Local Government Act and section eighty-six committees no longer will exist. Although the decision to disband this particular committee was made a year or two ago approximately. I want to thank the, the members of that previous committee, as I said earlier on. The work they did is largely sort of unadvertised or unknown by the bulk of the community. They've done a fantastic job, those people. It's a legacy that I think um, anyone would be proud to have, to have that, those gardens. Because I'm sure as great as they are today, they'll only become better and, and uh, become a bigger attraction for Greater Shepparton. And now with the previous motion adopting the bridge building, I think it will be even greater, a greater asset for Greater Shepparton. So I'd like to thank the committee. Having said that, they've still got an opportunity to, to be an advisory committee, which effectively will still have the uh, benefit of their knowledge and advice and anyone else who may want to uh, become members of that committee. Um, I know that I think I'd like to be at our council representative. I'm just saying that out right now. Uh, if that's the case, that'd be fantastic. So great job for the past decade or so. And uh, I'm sure it'll be a fantastic asset moving forward for many, many decades to come.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just quickly, I'd just like to thank the members of the Botanic Gardens Committee. Um, all their work and expertise in establishing this fantastic gardens, because they've done a wonderful job. Um, taking lots of time out of their own lives just to build something so wonderful and amazing for Shepparton and Greater Shepparton and the wider, wider community. Because it is something a little bit different, something that's not anywhere else. And it's just going to be, as Dini said, it'll keep growing and growing. And it will become something that people will want to come to Shepparton to visit. So thank you to those members who started up this, um, started with this committee and did such an amazing job.
Absolutely. Thank you, councillor Sutton. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Next is item seven point six. Are you doing okay?
Kim's looked up.
Um, just want to check councillor Keith, can you hear us? I think, um, yeah. Councillor Keith, can you hear us? I think we have lost connection with councillor Keith.
Madam Too Sir.
You've just been with us for, for a minute? Yeah.
She's back. Yes, back.
Councillor Keith, can you hear us and see us?
I could just see everybody frozen. That's all I could see.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we are all good now.
I don't know what happened. I think everyone must have me.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, we can now hear you and see you and you can do the same. So that's good. Um, moving on to item number seven point six. Contract number one nine seven three, construction of flood lighting to vibrant reserve variation. Now, there's a recommendation on page twenty-four. And councillor Patterson, would you like to move a motion? Could you please unmute yourself? Thank you.
Sorry. Authorized payment variation three under contract nineteen seventy-three. Construction of flood lighting to vibrant reserve with a value of seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars ninety-five, including GST. Authorized chief executive officer to approve payments up to a thousand, ten thousand dollars, including GST if additional variations required to complete the project.
Uh, councillor Patterson, could you please repeat I, uh, point number one? I think there was some, uh, some vagueness in the, in the amount that you quoted. Could you please repeat that item?
Okay, authorized payment of variation three under contract nineteen seventy-three. Construction of flood lighting to vibrant reserve with a value of seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-five cents, including GST.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a second? Councillor Summer? Okay. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, yes, this is clearly a case of power core shifting the goalposts on us. Um, the, the contract was drawn up to install these lights and were given a point of entry for power. And then after um, the contract was awarded, power core come along and said, no, that's not right. We're not going to let you take power from there, which increased the, the cost of the job considerably, as we can see. Um, it's the second time tonight that's happened, things out of our control. And of course, council being council, we have to wear it. Uh, nothing we can do apart from that around generator. We won't want to be going near that. But it's um, it's unfortunate, but it's happened to us twice tonight.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, yeah, um, like councillor Patterson said, this is the second time tonight. Uh, there are always negotiations between stakeholders in these processes. And this comes down to a PowerPoint. The PowerPoint wasn't adequate and it's costing us another hundred thousand dollars. And it wasn't even our decision to use that PowerPoint, which uh, makes me wonder if perhaps PowerCore should be fronting some of this cost. Uh, quite a large variation and they do need to come to our attention under our procurement policy for very good reason. Um, attention to detail, I guess, is the lesson here. So, yeah, I'll support it. I'm not happy.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Uh, would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Thank you. Motion carried, unopposed. Councillor Aswari, could you please adjust your camera? We can't, I can't see you clearly. That's better. Thank you. All right, so next item is, um, item seven point seven, on page twenty-eight. Maud Street Mall precinct, final concept design. Councillor Keith?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just need to leave the room for this one. Thank you. Just to clear my conflict of interest.
Thank you, councillor Keith. Um, you will be taken to the waiting room, zone waiting room. Thank you. Just confirming, is councillor O'Keeffe in the waiting room now? And councillor O'Keeffe will not be able to participate in this discussion. Okay, good. So we can carry on uh, with this um, item. Do I have a, do I have a mover for this uh, item? Councillor Adam? Could you please unmute yourself?
Sorry, Madam Mayor. Uh, yes, I'll move the recommendation on page uh, twenty-eight as the motion. And I shall read, this is another important issue that's been uh, been quite controversial for many, many, many years. Recommend, or the motion is that the council adopt option four A for the redevelopment of the Maud Street Mall. Point two, authorize the chief executive officer to negotiate a variation to contract nineteen twenty-two for the detailed design of the Maud Street Mall precinct in line with option four A. And point three, acknowledge the eight point five seven five million dollar funding under the Better Building Regions Fund and note that a tender will be issued for the construction of the works as specified under contract number one nine two two, with the works anticipated to commence in twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Do I have a second? Councillor Jovanetti?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, this is uh, the culmination of, as I said, many, many, many years, if not decades of not just controversy, but opinions from different parts of our community on what should be done. I think collectively, the community and the council have all agreed that something needed to be done to revitalise the existing mall, which hopefully would also assist to revitalise the CBD in res- respect to business activity. Uh, we won't go through the details and the blow-by-blow description of how we got here. But here we are today, finally, with a motion that will actually have this, get this project started. Option four A is again, uh, the end result of much community consultation. Councils, especially in the last few months, have had last-minute consultations with a few other groups. But uh, more importantly, or not so much importantly, but uh, more of or more by the uh, uh, city go, the Chamber of Commerce, sorry, of Shepparton. Um, they've had some uh, great conversations and uh, quite lengthy conversations with council. Uh, their ideas and uh, have been put forward. We have been known of them for many years as well. But it took a lot of conversations back and forth to finally compromise to get this particular option up and running. And I think, uh, while it probably will never please everybody in this municipality, I think it's probably the best compromise and the best possible option that we could have delivered. So I'm very happy to uh, get this off the ground.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Councillor Jovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. As councillor Adam has indicated, this uh, issue of the mall has been going, ongoing from now for over twenty years. Um, we all accept and are aware that uh, we have to do something to the mall. And it's taken a long time to get to this point. But we, we have a responsibility to promote economic growth in the Mel area. And we've been advised by traders that through, through traffic is the way to go. When it's all said and done, all traders want is an environment that will attract customers to their shops. And council want new businesses in the Mel. Uh, this was not going to happen if the Mel stayed as it was. I agree with the Mel having slow-moving traffic with forty-plus parks available to shoppers. As I've constantly been told by traders that shoppers don't want to walk to shops. They wish to park at the front of the shop for their own convenience. Uh, I think we, we must thank uh, Damien Drum and the Commonwealth Government for their funding injection. Without this, we may still have been talking about the Mel project in another twenty years' time. And I think we also need to acknowledge the uh, efforts of the chamber who have been involved in this right from uh, the word go.
Thank you, councillor Jovanetti. Uh, would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Sutton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to point out, just say a few words. I do agree that this is a very good um, outcome as it divides street from Friar Street to High Street, parking on either side, east and west. And although, I'm not sure why the roadway isn't in the middle, because if it was in the middle, we wouldn't have to lose so many trees. So I think hopefully that can be looked at down the track once they start doing the design. And um, hopefully that we can get to talk to group GSA too and just find out what their ideas are. And also with the playground being stuck in the middle of Stuart Street, I think that's just blocking off Wyndham Street. So I'd like to see us speaking to GSA about that as well. And um, otherwise, I think it's fantastic. After all this time, we've got something actually happening. We've got funding to do it. Thank you to the federal government. And let's move on and get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Uh, would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Hazeman? Your hand. Yeah.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think as councillor Adam said, um, one thing I think everyone agrees on, that a bit of infrastructure that's now a bit over thirty years old. Um, it's been contentious ever since the, it was installed by the then um, city of Shepparton. Um, it's never had universal support from other community or the traders. Everyone's had a varying um, view on what should happen to it. What we do all agree on is it definitely, as a bit of community infrastructure, is in need of some upgrade. Now, we'll still get the debate going on during the design phase about the, the pros and cons of that, uh, that upgrade, which that's, that's been the history of this project for, you know, uh, ever since the city of Greater Shepparton was formed. But in fact, the cynic in me recognizes that in September of nineteen ninety-eight, there was a plan, a concept plan released for consultation that is going to be remarkably similar to what the final design will look like. Um, the difference that we've got um, with this position now is for the first time ever, there's um, some money on the table and eight and a half million reasons gives um, the good basis for the compromises and the positional changes that have occurred in recent times to enable us to move forward. Um, I think that there is an opportunity for everyone to get something out of this. The traders are clearly indicating that um, passing traffic is an essential ingredient for their businesses. They point to the success of Friar Street in, in that regard. Um, so if we could replicate what's happening in Friar Street into the mall with the development of this project, it'll be a good return on the investment. And of course, the um, the congratulations to the federal government for their eight, eight and a half million. That's been the circuit breaker that's got this thing moving.
Thank you, councillor Hazeman. Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Councillor Patterson?
Yes, I think, thanks. Um, and local member Damien Drum's got a, uh, should be congratulated. He's the one that's really got it over the line with the, with the money. I think everyone's got a reason why it shouldn't go ahead and everyone's got a reason why it should go ahead. I think there was a general consensus between all councillors and most of the community, especially the chamber, that it's time to do something. And I think everyone has taken a step back and thought, well, if I don't get exactly what I want, at least let's get something done. So we've all, to everyone's credit, council and chamber and all the business people that have had an input and there's been plenty of them ringing us all. Um, we've all decided that, okay, let's decide to go and do something and get it done. People are saying, you know, we need to make a Friar Street out of it. All you need is a couple of cafes in there. Couple of cafes won't go into the Mel while there isn't any parking in there. That's why they aren't interested in shifting into the Mel. If we could have a couple of major cafes in the Mel, it would have worked, but they won't go in there. So now with some parking, cafes will go in, other, other businesses will come alongside and be great. So I really do congratulate everyone, including our CEO, who has a big input on changing. We were, you know, we were stuck with number four, which really wasn't what we wanted, but it was the best. But um, come back from community consultation and that come back by one percent. So we never had any guidance as far as what the community wanted apart from yes or no, um, which was stuck again down the middle. So I think the council and the chamber should be all congratulated for putting their head down, thumbs up, and let's get into it and get it done. And that's what's happening. And we all won't have a win out of it. There'll be things that we want that won't be there. But something will happen and Shepparton CBD, we're better off for it.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Uh, councillor Aswari, did you want to speak? Do you want to speak?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that. But I just made some very brief, brief notes. Uh, one of the things that One of the things that I was always of the view in relation to, and I draw some support here from councillor Hazelman in relation to this, that over the journey, the worst thing we could do was do nothing. And at least we're actually doing something. But at least now, with the funding and the plans, we have a direction. And the success or otherwise of the direction we take is in our own hands. In my own opinion, it's no silver bullet, but at least it's a piece of community infrastructure which was actually crying out for development and change because it was just, or is stagnating. And I think a lot of people with the COVID-nineteen crisis, the face of shopping will never go back to the way it was. And we have to be innovative and work out ways of how we can make that whole process work. But I think it's a fantastic thing and I applaud Damien Drum and also the CEO as far as getting traction in relation to this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Oriswari. Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
Thank you. I think it better since everybody else has. It's like councillor Patterson says, it's an exercise in compromise. It's not the design I would have picked. The community didn't really want a road right through it, but the clincher for me was the chamber's efforts. They had a petition with so many business owners signing that they wanted this to change into a road. So to me, that made a big difference in terms of whether the road should go right through. I just hope there's no complaints when we start construction in terms of disruption to business. We will try to minimise that obviously, but there's going to be some construction disruption. What I really like about this is that we've reduced a lot of the clutter that was in that original design, I'm hoping. And there'll be less maintenance involved in that. We can retain a lot more of the trees than we could have before, which is a really good outcome. Had a long discussion about why we can't put a road right through the middle and retain both of those avenues of trees. But it made sense in the end that we might need to sacrifice some. Data suggests traffic is a deterrent to foot traffic and shopping and that nice relaxed experience. Not sure how we're going to maintain a ten-kilometre speed limit through there. But all those details can be sorted out. The fact is that we're doing it. We're going to do it to our best ability. And it's innovative. I'm excited to see what it's going to look like. So bring it on.
Thank you councillor Summer.
Madam Mayor, can I just clarify?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, look, this is an exciting project. It is one of the most challenging projects this council has had. And it's congratulations to everybody to get to this stage and move it forward, and particularly to federal government and Damien Drum for providing the funding so that we can get on and hopefully have construction starting early next year. But because it is such a difficult project and there's so much interest in it, we must be focused from this point on to deliver this project. We must stay with what we adopt tonight. And what we are adopting tonight is option four A, okay? I heard some comments during the debate tonight about a potential to shift alignments. We've got an agreed alignment and that's what's represented in option four A. And I cannot afford to have a major debate going forward. Tonight is the night and we've agreed and we will deliver this. It's going to be a good project. And it's a futurist project. Yes, okay, there's debate about putting traffic back down the mall. And what that means is that going backwards, no. We brought a futurist in to give us guidance and futurists said, stay flexible, stay modular, do that sort of thing. We'll design that into the construction. And in that way, we will have a project that withstands the future, is designed for the future and can be altered for changes in the future. Just wanted to clarify that, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Peter Harriet. I think, yeah, so everybody has spoken and just my closing comments. Again, emphasising that how important this project is for this whole community. And we definitely have come a long way and from this point onwards. And this all happened because there was a determination that this time around, we have to make it work. So hence, we are saying that we are at this stage. And obviously, the catalyst was also the the funding that we received. So thanks to Damien Drum and Federaman for that. And from this point onwards, let's work closely and the detailed design would finalise all the areas of some of the clarification that are needed and would further refine the concept design. But it is option four A that is going to go into the detailed design phase. That is something that we all need to understand. So with that, I think we have done enough debate and everybody has had the opportunity. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. And with now, we will bring councillor Kim O'Keeffe back into the meeting. Okay, councillor O'Keeffe, you can hear us and you can see us, right? Thank you. Good. So moving on to item number eight point one, on page forty-one, Tony Albert artwork acquisition. There's a recommendation. And councillor Hazelman, do you want to move the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll move that the council support the recommendation of the SAM advisory committee to display the public artwork by Tony Albert, House of Discards, two thousand and nineteen, on the forecourt of the New Shepparton Art Museum.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor O'Keeffe? Thank you councillor Hazelman. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. The original SAM design had the opportunity for a major bit of public art in the forecourt, but it was subsequently removed from the building's scope due to the budgetary constraints. So it's really good to see that through this process. And a work of art by an internationally recognised indigenous artist who's got great potential to add to the SAM project itself, but has the potential of further relationships with Shepparton's local Aboriginal community. It's not an insubstantial piece of work. It is quite large. It's about a thousand kilograms from memory. It needs to be bolted into the forecourt and it'll be quite an imposing figure when people approaching and into seeing that they will go past this very substantial piece of public art.
Thank you councillor Hazelman. Councillor O'Keeffe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think councillor Hazelman has covered it beautifully, but I think it's also great, you know, to to really acknowledge that an indigenous artist can see the value of the building and the story that it's going to be telling with the Kail arts in there as well. So I think it's really fantastic, you know, that we have had this incredible internationally recognised indigenous artists to really, you know, want to be part of the ongoing story of SAM.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Summer?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't think this is going to be the most popular motion that we've had. And there's probably going to be a little bit of backlash to it, but I am going to support it. It's been gifted to us. And as said, it's going to be prominently installed at the foreground of the new SAM at the lake. SAM is a great big blinding box and you can't miss it. And this is fittingly, another great big blinding box that you can't miss. So it's free for us. It has been gifted, but it does cost a bit to install. So there might be people out there saying that we're wasting ratepayers' money. But not all art needs to be light in order to achieve its purpose. And the purpose is to stimulate thoughts and conversation. And it could even be that we have the ugliest building and the ugliest piece of installation work in all of Australia. And even that can hold some artistic appeal for some people. Just about anything can be made into a tourist attraction with the right marketing angle. So we've gone through this before. We've had backlash with the sculpture on the lake. We've had backlash for Perses Angels many decades ago. They acquired a huge sum and can still be seen at the current gallery. Backlash for the tumbleweeds at the entrance. Being artistic, there's backlash, which is a shame. But it does catapult these works into the Shepparton Hall of Fame that we still talk about them today. This particular work is called House of Discards, a metaphor for the unspoken history between colonial and indigenous Australia. There's unresolved past and futures. So it's quite ironic that we're doing this now with the civil unrest. About the structures balanced together like a house of cards. So it's quite simple. It's precarious, but also able to hold great weights, which I think is another interesting talking point. Whether it will strengthen pride within the region or further relations with indigenous people is yet to be seen. That deliberate appropriation of Albert Namanger's work is probably a little bit high level for most people, but may appeal to visitors. This particular artist, if I have time to talk about him, he's an acclaimed war artist who's acknowledged young indigenous people who defended Australia. Another of his works, forgive me for pronunciation, but Yin in Majemi, Thou Didst Let Fall. It's located in Hyde Park in Sydney and it features four standing bullets and three fallen shells. So that represents who survived and who fallen during the war. We'll be valuing our piece at a cost of six hundred dollars. And I think we'll be happily surprised, given the significance of his other piece in Sydney. Yeah, won't be everyone's cup of tea, but like I said, that's a small piece of the puzzle.
Your time is, do you want a time extension?
No, I'm, I'm, no, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Yes, councillor Patterson?
So listening to councillor Summer, I'm firmly in favour of not giving it back. Sounds like it's going to be a great acquisition to our gallery.
Giving what back?
Not in favour of giving it back. I think it's a great acquisition to our gallery.
Okay, the gift to me.
I don't know what you mean.
Thank you for your comments, councillor Patterson. Is, does anyone else want to speak to the motion? No? All right. So with that, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Okay, motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Now, next is item eight point two, page forty-nine. Regarding Riverlink's West Side Joint Use Agreement with the Department of Education. There's a recommendation on page forty-nine. Would anyone like to move a motion? Councillor Summer?
I don't have the recommendation in front of me, but I was comfortable with the wording in the recommendation, the agenda. So if it's the same wording, then I'm happy to move as it reads in the agenda.
Okay. Do you want to do it?
Page forty-nine?
Page forty-nine. Okay, thank you.
Page forty-nine.
Yeah. Thanks very much councillor Summer. Do I have a second? Councillor Patterson? Thank you. Can you unmute?
I'm more than happy to second it. I do have a copy if you'd like me to read it out.
Yes, please. That perhaps would help.
Community joint use agreement with the Department of Education and Training for the Use of a Facility Called Riverlink's West West Side, located in the Ruten Campus of Greater Shepparton Secondary College. The term of the agreement is set to be ten years with a further term of five, if acceptable to both parties.
Thank you. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, West Side has been operating since nineteen ninety-seven, since I was an aspiring actor at the age of seventeen. And loved the, loved the shows. This is a bit of relief actually, because it gives us some surety for the next ten to fifteen years that the facility is going to be maintained. There's a little bit of unsurety around it since this Shepparton Education Plan has come out. The buildings surrounding that facility could fall into disarray, which could reduce the value of it. We're pouring quite a lot of resources into this new SAM. And my concern is that perhaps we let the existing arts and culture facilities fall away. But this at least gives us a fifteen-year timeframe to try and work out a deal with the Department of Education to try and work out ownership so that we can have some significant investment. I mean, it's an extensive building. It's got an orchestra pit and a fly tower, huge potential. Sixty percent of all the performances are local that go in there. And I'm sure that, you know, the crampedness, the bad air conditioning, the foyer, the toilets, it's all not perfect, but it does add to the charm of the place. So I'm more than happy to support something that might, yeah, give it a bit of assurance moving forward. So happy with that.
Thank you councillor Summer. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm muted, yes. This is a very important piece of infrastructure, especially from Rutenah, but also at the Golden Valley. There's lots of events held there. It's a great performing venue. We were concerned when the education plan came along, what was going to happen. We sat down with the education department and tried to negotiate a deal. Neither either the council or the education department were happy to go into a twenty-five-year time commitment. So it was negotiated, we're going to fifteen years with the option of another five, ten years, sorry, the option of another five, until we can work out exactly what's going to happen. But it's very important this is maintained. It is a good venue and it would have been a disaster if we lost it, because it's a great venue for what we have.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, all right. So we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Next is item eight point three, on page fifty-four, local law permit exemptions for section eighty-six committees of management. There's a recommendation on page fifty-four. Would a councillor please move a motion? Do we have a mover? Councillor Patterson?
I'll move the recommendation on page fifty-four, Madam Mayor. I won't read it out. It's quite long.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you. Councillor, do I have a second? Councillor Hazelman?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to second the motion. It's printed on page fifty-four of the agenda.
Thank you. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just quickly, Madam Mayor, I've got one heading here in a page that's cutting red tape. What the motion's about is there's several reserves and halls that are run by committee of management. And the current train, well, the current regulations say that if you hire the hall of one of these committees, you then have to go and obtain a legal licence, which is another licence through council. This does away with the second licence. You can deal directly with, for instance, a Kunggatna Recreation Reserve Community Centre or the Tally Ruten Recreation Centre. You can deal directly with them and cuts down the legality of having to duplicate your paperwork, your applications, et cetera. So I think we all certainly endorse that.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, Madam Mayor, it's not necessary. Councillor Patterson covered it well.
Excellent. Thank you. Would any councillor like to move, to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. So next is item eight point four. Small Town Festive Decoration Grant, twenty twenty. There's a recommendation on page fifty-nine. Would a councillor please move a motion? Councillor Oriswari?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation contained on page fifty-nine, items one through three inclusive.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor O'Keeffe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to second that recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Oriswari, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Self-explanatory, but I will for the benefit of the gathered audience. Small Town Festive Decorations Grant Programme provides small towns and localities with a population of less than ten thousand dollars the opportunity to apply for a grant of up to two thousand dollars to install festive decorations to celebrate the festive season. And if you look in the body of the agenda, you'll see that the three successful applicants on this occasion are Dukie, Mary And if you look in the body of the agenda, you'll see that the three successful applicants on this occasion are Dukie, Merigum and Talamba, all very small but important parts of the Greater Shepparton area. And I think that's about covers it.
Thank you, councillor Osvari. Councillor Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just very briefly, I've been to all of those small communities, obviously, and I think they do a fantastic job, they certainly contribute. And we know that this money will certainly be spent wisely and their Christmas will certainly be a little bit brighter. So well done to those small communities, for number one, putting their hand up for some support, but we know that they'll spend the money wisely and we know that they will also contribute.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed, thank you. Next is item number nine. Council Plan 2019-20 Quarter Three Progress Report, there's a recommendation on page 64. Would someone please move a motion? Do I have a mover? Councillor Summer? Thank you.
I'll move the recommendation as printed on that page. I went to get a hard copy of the agenda, it wasn't in the pigeonhole when I was there, so I have read it online.
Okay, so on page 64, this recommendation, do I have a second? Thank you councillor Patterson, would you like to read this motion? Since councillor Summer doesn't have that in front of her?
Yes, the council note the council plan 2019-20 Quarterly Three Progress Report that provides details in relation to achieving the measures of success identified in the council plan 2017-2021.
Thank you. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. The council plan is our overarching document, it's the cornerstone of everything that we do. We get together at the beginning of our council term and nut out the vision for the next four years and beyond. It's basically a report card to the community on how we're tracking on that. It's councillors' role to be accountable to the organisation and to the community in delivering the outcomes that's in the council plan. Quite high level, but in terms of seeing what we're intending to do and how we're tracking and doing it, especially for potential candidates, I'd recommend getting online and having a good look at the document.
Thank you councillor Summer. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
A wise old man once said, be careful what you sign up to, and I'll just give you the five themes that we adopted. Leadership, and I'm referring this to what's happened in the world in the last three months. Leadership and governance was number one, provide strong civic leadership. Two, associate, develop, resilient, inclusive, healthy communities. Three was economic, build a thriving, resilient economy. Four was build, provide and support appealing, relevant infrastructure that makes Greater Shepparton an attractive, livable regional city. And five was environment, enhance and protect the clean, green environment that makes Greater Shepparton the unique place it is. All those pillars that we signed up to have taken an absolute flogging from our friend the virus. And, you know, I think it is, not by accident, those five themes are there. But we've done very well in trying to defend and hold what we've got without being able to build on a lot of the other things. So those five pillars have come in very handy, they are there for a reason, no doubt. And, you know, we've been defending rather than attacking and increasing our infrastructure as we would have hoped. But we are winning and we will win.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to move, like to speak against the motion? No? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote, those in favour? Councillor Keefe, I didn't see your hand. Thank you. Councillor, okay, motion carried, unopposed, thank you. Next is item 9.2, May 2020 Monthly Financial Report on page 67, there's a recommendation, do I have a mover? Councillor, thank you. Could you be unmute yourself? Thank you.
Thank you, I'm finished now. That the council will receive and note the May 2020 Monthly Financial Report.
Thank you, and do I have a second? Councillor Hazeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, happy to second this lengthy motion.
Thank you. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Well, thanks, Madam Mayor, look, normally you know how detailed I would get into describing our financial reports. But being in this COVID recovery phase, I think I'd like to deflect or maybe ask, is Mr Titlin tonight? I'm not sure. If he's not, I would maybe yield my time to the CEO, maybe he can give us a quick indication of how we're performing, if that's possible.
Mr Henry?
Thank you, councillor Adam. So the monthly report relates to the end of May figures. And one of the important areas is to look at the surplus. And importantly, we're ahead of the Q3 adopted forecast by 5%. And this is largely due to the federal government bringing forward 6.7 million in financial assistance grants from 2021. As a result, we've got an improved forecast. Importantly to note, the financial impacts of COVID-19 continue to be monitored. And not only for this, the end of this financial year, but obviously it's important for the 2021 financial year as well. The sundry debtors and the rate debtors are at a very good balance considering COVID-19, with 80% of sundry debtors classified as current or 30 days or less. And just under 500 rate payers out of 31,000 on a payment plan. So that's, that's a good result. And at the end of May, in relation to the capital, we're at 60.2 million has been spent. And that's almost 82% of the original budget, but compared to the amended Q3 figure, that's over 90%. So that's a very good figure. And by the end of the financial year, we hope that percentage, well, it will increase because we're flat out at the moment, trying to finish off the end of the financial year. And considering that's been delivered through COVID-19, that is a very, very good result. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Ray, that's good.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, Madam Mayor, did someone second the motion? I think I may have hurried it a bit.
Yes, councillor Hazeman.
Oh, he did, sorry, I didn't see that, thank you.
Councillor Hazeman, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote, those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. So next item is 9.3 on page 69. Contracts awarded under delegations and contracts advertised but yet to be awarded. There's a recommendation on page 69, do I have a mover? Councillor Osvari?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity. I'd like to move the recommendation as a motion contained on page 69, and I'll read it because it's only brief. That the council note, number one, contracts awarded under delegated authority by the chief executive officer. Two, contracts awarded under delegated authority by director. Three, contracts awarded under delegated authority by manager. And four, requests for tenders advertised but not yet awarded.
Thank you councillor Osvari, do I have a second? Councillor Keefe?
I'm happy to second that recommendation, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Keefe. Councillor Osvari, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will take that opportunity. As I've said on many, many occasions over the journey whilst I've been a councillor, I always find that this particular section of the monthly meeting is very interesting because it demonstrates to those people that think that the rates, they don't see any bang for buck. This is actually a roadmap of exactly where council stands as far as projects that are part of infrastructure and various other aspects of council operations. And it demonstrates the length, the breadth and the width of exactly what the council gets up to in a great variety of things. And with recourse to the particular item that we've got on page 70, particularly interested in contract number 2043, which talks about the detailed design of the Princess Park Pavilion in Shepparton. Again, another part of the development of Princess Park, which I've often said needs great development. And it's starting, starting to come to fruition. There's a number of other projects, contracts, tenders, a whole variety of things, which I'll leave to my fellow councillor colleagues to speak to. But one of the other ones that I want to pick out is a contract 2045. The provision of North Street, streetscaping Fry Street, Deborn Street. This is another example of developing a streetscape because in order to make people like the city they live in, you've got to make it presentable, attractive. And to, this is an example where that is going to happen, but I think that just about covers it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Osvari. Councillor Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you and thank you councillor Osvari for that, you pinched a couple that I was going to speak to, but that's okay. But I will highlight the importance of the Shepherd and East recreational path. That's been quite a big one from the community that certainly they've had some input on. So it's great to see more recreational paving, paving that, you know, that the community can have better access and obviously be out, you know, moving and using those parks, those paths. So that's a really good one for Shepherd and East. There's quite a few things pending there, so it's great to see, as councillor Osvari pointed out, there's a lot of things happening. And considering, you know, we've still got coronavirus to deal with, it's great to still see that we've got, you know, a lot happening on our books, so to speak.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Keefe. Would anyone like to speak against the motion? No? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Yes, councillor Patterson?
Just very quickly, it shows you the advantage of being able to get the tender signed off and get moving. And then, you know, the shepherds walking path is well and truly under construction as we speak. They've been hard at it for a while out there, so it certainly gets things moving.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? No, okay, so we'll now go to the vote, those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Now, the budget, item 9.4 on page 73, 2020-2021 budget. There's a recommendation on page 73, 74, 75 and 76. Would any councillor like to move a motion, please? This is the budget 2020-2021, do I have a mover? Yes, councillor Giovinetti?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to move the recommendation related to the budget pages 73, 74, 75 and 76, and I don't intend to read it all out.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Adam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Councillor Giovinetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Firstly, I'd just like to commend the staff on their efforts to prepare the budget in this current climate. It's a very brave move because really we've no idea what the future of the following financial year is going to bring us. But council has opted to determine the budget so that we have a pathway to follow right from July 1. There is no doubt that the budget may change due to COVID-19 and the effects it may have on our community. We're not to know what that may be at the moment. We have a starting point and we like to accept that our budget will be a living document that may change due to the prevailing conditions. There are some in the community who will need support with the payments of their rates. And council has an effective plan to help those people if they need support. Some councils have not passed on the 2% increase that councils are allowed to by the state government. We have factored this 2% increase into our budget. If we intend, as we do, to provide support to our community through the COVID-19 pandemic, these funds have to be found. Our economic responses have, have to be funded. I'm very pleased to advise that if approved later in this meeting, a stage two economic response will add a further $2 million to our stage one response. These, these responses have to be funded through our resources.
Thank you, councillor Giovinetti. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, actually I'll reserve my right to speak later on if that's possible, thank you.
Okay, would any councillor like to speak for, against the motion? Councillor Summer?
Yes, one day, I'm looking forward to the day when I don't actually object and I support a budget. But unfortunately, today's not that day. Look, I'm objecting on the grounds of point four. That's applying a municipal charge of $195 and also to point B, which authorises a vague $10 million loan. So speak to point A about the municipal charge. By now, councillors should be aware that the charge does not increase the rates collected. It does apply a rating burden to lower rated properties and it does result in very high rated commercial and industrial properties paying substantially less. I'd like to congratulate the fourteen submitters who did go out of their way to try and draw attention to the inequity of this charge. They did voice their concern. And it is true that abolishing the charge would result in a rating decrease for most people, most properties, in a time of need. But since most councillors are comfortable with this charge at this stage, I'm happy to wait for the full waiting, the rating review that's been promised, conducted to the later stage, hopefully for a frank and full discussion around this charge. And I haven't given up trying to bring it to people's attention. The loan, so point B, $10 million, it lists a few projects that seem vague and intense. And far into the future, we haven't got all the detail around things such as the Menara Centre or Stadium. That's hardly strong justification for another $10 million above what we already owe and collect. For a long time, we prided ourselves on having zero loans. Our rates went up to compensate for not taking out loans. And now we have high rates and the loans are creeping up to a threshold that is on par with other councils. So, yeah, potentially detrimental to growth in the region, could discourage investment if we're not careful. I think it's a fairly lazy way of funding capital works, especially ones that don't draw a return. So I hope we don't actually have to use this $10 million. Quick snapshot of our financial position just shows our surplus dropping quite sharply. Renewals, which we wanted to be funded at 100%, are dipping down below target quite a lot and loans are increasing. So those three things, you could assume we're slipping into risky territory. And I'd like to see some evidence of how we're going to claw that back because this $10 million loan doesn't really offer a lot of assurance. We had a chance to actually offer the public something they wanted, which was complimentary tip tickets or some kind of rubbish disposal thing that would work for everybody. That was hit on the head, the public voted with their feet, hundreds of them all suffering in their cars, turning up to something that they wanted to be funded, happy to pay.
Councillor Summer, do you want to have a time extension? Your time is up.
Um, just to say one more thing, if possible, if councillors allow.
Is that all right? Yep, I think you can go ahead.
Thank you. I just find it astonishing that we haven't changed our differentials in this time of the COVID-19 pandemic. There is a big burden on industrial and commercial properties and farming right now. And this is an opportunity to really give them some rate relief and spread the burden. But, yeah, we have just business as usual and the status quo. So I think the public expects more from us than what this budget delivers. So I am again voting no to a budget, so sorry to say.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Yes, Councillor Sutton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity. Uh, just like to point out from the public submissions, um, a few people that put in for extra, extra funds had, were looked at, um, and were given a bit more money, which was good. The event sponsorship, the COVID recovery, they've given $62,000. Um, Food Chair went from 20,000 to 50,000. I think that's a very good, uh, outcome. And, um, Shepparton Search and Rescue, they were given an extra $1,000. And Family and Financial Services, they, they were increased by $10,000. So it just goes to show, if you put in a submission, it will be looked at and you might get some extra money when, if it's needed, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Councillor Sutton. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Patterson?
Uh, a couple of things, I think, um, well, some people, I, councils understand because the house isn't that valuable, doesn't mean the guy that owns that house doesn't own five or six of them. If he does, there's a lot of investors coming out of Melbourne and buy five or six houses, believe me, in Mariposa, but that happens time and time again. Uh, it gets away a very small contribution to running municipality. At least the municipal charge, he has to make some sort of effort to, to pay his way. Um, I think with the two percent rate increase, some councils haven't gone ahead with that. Um, and I can understand that, but I think what we've done, we have gone to the two percent. Uh, a lot of people do understand that some of the businesses have just been phenomenally busy. Um, a lot have suffered really badly, but some have just been in the sweet spot and have done very well. So I think we're better off going for two percent and utilizing that extra money to help people out. As Councillor Giovinetti explained later on, there's a, uh, a section where it's putting, putting a lot more money back in the community to help people that are struggling. Uh, without the two percent, we would struggle to do that ourselves, so, uh, totally endorse it. Um, I think the staff, it's a monstrous job. Um, it takes months and months and months to put together. I think they've done a terrific job and I recommend the budget.
Thank you, Councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Keith?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think, you know, it's, we really need to point out what we're actually right in the middle of at the moment, and that's COVID nineteen. Um, I think council has done an incredible job with relief, with our relief package, and now we're moving into recovery. That's had an impact on our budget, there's no doubt about it. And I think when we look at our budget, we have to look at balance, you know, with what's happening. We haven't had this type of impact on our budget, obviously before. This is something that we weren't expecting, but we need to have recovery. We need to be able to provide funds to help the community moving forward. Our economic development moving forward is very, very uncertain. You know, what does that mean to our businesses, our community? It's very broad, but we had to have a relief package there, we have to have recovery. And I think, you know, that the hard work that's gone on, we've all seen it. We've seen how we've had to look at the budget even deeper to really co- um, compensate for what we are offering within that, um, relief and recovery package. I've had some great feedback, you know, from businesses that are using those funds that we have offered, you know, whether it be setting up their website to put their products up online, whether it be a support within their business in a different way, whether it be community members, you know, this, it's so broad. But we had to help, we had to find some money within our budget to do that. So it's, it's uncertain, you know, waters at the moment for all of us. And, but as a community, I know we're all going to be strong and step up and move forward. But we had to have some form of, you know, recovery. And I'm really proud to think we can support the community. The way we support the community is perceived different from different people. But I'm very comfortable, um, you know, with what we're actually doing and what we're achieving and, and very positive, you know, have to be positive, you know, what is ahead. There's going to be some significant challenges within our community. And we certainly encourage community members to be able to look at, you know, if they need support, we have support within the council, um, opportunities to, you know, to help them. So financial stress, whether it be rates, you know, they can certainly put their hands up and have some assistance. And we, we need to do that and we will do that. So we all need to be positive and be, and move forward. And certainly, um, you know, this recovery package, relief package has been significant. And we'll, we'll support the community. So it's, it's, it's an unchanging budget, no matter who knows what, you know, where we're going to end up. There's going to be some, you know, some highs and lows, some, probably some possible things that we're going to not expect. But we have to just keep pushing forward and, and really making sure we are giving this, the community some support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Keith. Um, would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Hayesman? Could it be unmuted?
Yeah, it took me a while to get there. Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I think it's also worthwhile each year to reflect back on, on the construct of the budget and what drives it. In fact, uh, uh, this, um, budget has been informed by the rating strategy developed back in two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-one. And that determines the components of the budget. And that's the opportunity when you want significant change to the budget, whether it be differentials or other charges or so forth. That's the opportunity to, to do so. Out of those, um, the rating strategy, it provides the basis for, um, staff, directorate budgets, business plans to be developed into the future with some degree of certainty, at least over that, that four-year period. I think it was Councillor Giovinetti that made comment about the unknowns of what COVID is going to do. We already know by estimates that the COVID nineteen on the budget for this year is a net cost to council of some 2.22 million at this point in time, which has an impact on council's liquidity. But going further forward, I've got no doubt that towards the end of the year, um, in the, probably the second quarter, um, we'll be doing a fairly substantial review of our budget. We'd anticipate at that particular point of time that both state and federal governments will be moving significantly into funding of regional infrastructure projects as their way of encouraging employment. We've already seen from the federal government, even tonight, the discussion about the eight and a half million dollars for them all. I think we'll see more of that and we'll need to see that, uh, council has a range of projects in our Capital Works Programme that are capable of being implemented fairly quickly. And we've seen a number of them listed here against potential grant, uh, potential loan funds. I'd like to think there is going to be possibility that we can access into federal or state funding to, to meet part of that, that commitment. We also know that, um, what are the pressures from the state government, um, or federal government is going to impact upon us. We've seen the Prime Minister in recent days talking about the need for austerity. Does that mean a reduction in some of the funding around government, federal government funded programmes? We get to see the state government budget, which is looking to be handed down in October. But we already know that the, the landfill levy, which, um, has been delayed until January twenty twenty-one, that's a half a million dollar a year hit to our, um, our waste management programme that we will need to address in, into the future. Um, quite seriously, we, um, are unsure of a full twelve months implications of what COVID is going to have on our budget. We have an estimate, but I'm pretty sure that later in the year, there'll be a major review of our budget to take advantage of both, uh, federal and state infrastructure programmes, but also more understanding of the impact of COVID nineteen on our budget and on our community for that matter.
Thank you, Councillor Hayesman. Uh, would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Councillor Adam, would you like to speak for the motion?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor, I will. I will just briefly, I thought I'd wait and give everyone else an opportunity, and I think they've covered everything, basically. I haven't got much to say, except to say that, um, yeah, we've all said the same thing. This environment we find ourselves in this COVID nineteen is obviously unprecedented. And the effort that the organisation put into producing this under those conditions, um, I think is phenomenal and I would congratulate everyone from the CEO down. Um, and what Councillor Giovinetti said earlier on, as much as it can be, it is a living document. We have quarterly and six-month reviews of the budget. So no doubt there'll be some pretty, um, deep and meaningful meetings when we review this budget because things could, can change. But having said that, I think we've been very fortunate as a region and as a municipality. Our economy is agriculture, basically we know that. And I know for a fact that some of our agricultural producers have had, probably had the best year they've had in a long time uh, because of the demand for the products that we produce. And that said, that doesn't always flow through the entire community, but I think we're better positioned than most, um, certainly most urban communities, but even probably more than most regional communities. That said, the budget is, um, a pretty good document at the end of the day. And I'm sure any changes that need to be made in the future will be made and, uh, we'll, we'll go on to better things for next year, without doubt.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Councillor, Councillor Adam. Uh, now, before I, uh, go back to Councillor Giovinetti, uh, to offer him his right of reply, I would also like to say a few words. Uh, my fellow councillors have, um, uh, have, have assisted this very comprehensively and made some really good points. I would like to, um, thank and congratulate our, uh, our finance team, uh, Levan Smith Jarvis and, uh, and also the executive leadership team and everyone in, among the council staff in preparing this budget. Uh, they have shown remarkable diligence and, um, professionalism in developing council's budget despite, as all, as all of you have noticed, despite the pressure and challenges of COVID nineteen and adjusting to this emergency in times of uncertainties. Uh, our staff commitment and professionalism in completing the budget process within June thirtieth timeline has resulted in not deferring the budget until August thirty-one. Uh, this was a timeline that, uh, it was a timeline extension that was available to council. But, uh, the decision was to go ahead and stick to the original timeline. Uh, of course, an important part of the process, uh, was also to seek budget submissions from community. And there were more than thirty or around forty submissions. And, uh, so of course the budget certainty and final, finalisation, um, now means that council will be able to deliver important services, um, to community with less interruptions. It also means that council, uh, would be able to provide additional financial support, as Councillor Sutton had also noticed, uh, that, uh, additional financial support to other community organisations such as Food Chair or Shepparton Financial and Food Services, Shepparton Search and Rescue. So these are all the benefits that are going back to our community. Uh, this budget also means that capital works, um, uh, projects, uh, with the budget, that will have budget allocation and they can progress and be delivered. All this is for the benefit of Greater Shepparton Community. Um, something that is, uh, that is really important as we are preparing to come out of COVID nineteen uh, and we are ready to provide bigger support to our community. We have seen, uh, state and federal, uh, funding coming to our region. Uh, as all of you have noted, that, uh, we, uh, we have had announcements, uh, from federal government, eight point five million dollars for more revitalisation, eight million dollars for working for Victoria Programme, two million dollars for local bridges and roads and et cetera. Now, in this project, there are opportunities for our region to grow local economy and to create jobs and support local businesses. And basically to achieve overall prosperity and, uh, wellbeing for our region. All these council endeavors, um, are going to help, um, help us improve the livability of our region and also to set us on the road of recovery from COVID nineteen, as most of you have noted. So I would like to highlight that, um, these positives do not happen in a vacuum. Council staff and the leadership team, um, they make hard yards to ensure that these capital projects are shovel-ready and they get their attention. Okay, so I'll stop here. I wanted to say a few things, uh, some positive, um, you know, some positive, uh, sentiments around all the hard work that council has done only to benefit our community too. So that's, that's really great. Thank you, I'll stop now. And with that, I'll go back to Councillor Giovinetti to offer him his right of reply since Councillor Summer, uh, spoke against the motion.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, it took me longer to, uh, decide that I don't believe there's anything further we need to say.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we'll now go to the vote, those in favour? Okay, those, uh, those against? So motion carried. All right, so we'll now go to item ten point one, new business grant. So, Councillor Summer?
No, Keith, Councillor Keith is frozen again. No, she's moving again now.
No, she's just been very still.
Okay, now, we can all hear and see each other. All right, item ten point one, new business grant, Thrive for Life. This recommendation on page eighty-five, uh, would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Keith?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation as a motion on page eighty-five that the council approves the grant assessment panel's recommendation to fund Thrive for Life under the new business grant programme for the total sum of $2,200, including GST.
Thank you, do I have a second? Councillor Sutton? Councillor Sutton, you are, you'll second this?
Sorry. Um, yes, I'll just, uh, second the motion as listed on page eighty-five.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councillor Keith, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, this is a fairly small grant, but I'm sure very important to this new business. This business has been working out of the Greater Shepparton Business Centre and is now expanding, which is fantastic, into premises at two eighty-four Wyndham Street, Shepparton. So the money, uh, is being used to upgrade their, um, facility, basically with their, um, kitchen and staff amenity upgrade. And the $2,200 will contribute towards that. And so it's great to see a little business that has started at the business centre and that has become more successful or successful and needing to relocate into a bigger premise. But just for a little bit of background, the Thrive for Four Services, um, includes also a Chica and Bendigo. So they're obviously expanding to Shepparton and surround specialising in providing home care packages and short-term restorative care, occupational therapy services. So we wish them well and we're hoping that this contribution will certainly help them with their new location.
Thank you, Councillor Keith. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just to say that it's, it's great to see moving, a business moving out of the business centre and into a shop in, in the CBD. So we've got lots of vacant shops, so it's good to see one being filled, so let's hope more happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Sutton. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Okay, would any councillor like to speak for the motion? We will now go to the vote, those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed, thank you. Next is item number ten point two, transport planning for Shepparton. This recommendation on page ninety-two. Can I have a move on? Do I have a move on for this recommendation? Councillor Patterson?
Uh, yes, I'll move, um, the recommendation nine point two, I won't read it out because I'm losing my voice.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Councillor Patterson. Do I have a second? Councillor Summer?
I guess happy to second the motion.
Thank you. Uh, Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, yes, Shepparton is currently in a growing phase, which is great. It's, um, for a long time, we, we didn't get a lot in Shepparton, but in the last few years, we've been, um, through a lot of hard work and a lot of people, we've received a lot of money for a lot of projects. Uh, just to mention the Shepparton Education Plan, GB Health Stage One, Menara Centre, GV Highway Bypass, we've received 208 million from the feds for that, Move Museum and Sam, just to name a few of the major ones. Um, and to cope with all that, we have to look after our transport, um, strategies. I can really see why in around two thousand, there was a amalgamation of councils that allowed the planning, um, to be a lot simplified regarding, um, roads, be built in there, major roads, arterial roads, et cetera. When you had three councils operating, uh, all protecting your own little bit of turf, it must have been very hard for those people back in those days to design, um, major plans for the future. And of course, after that amalgamation, it became a lot easier. And basically, what we have here is planning for the future. A lot of it has got that complicated, is now going on to an authority higher than ours. Um, and, but it all is so, so very important for our future, alternative routes, bypass routes, all the sort of stuff that eventually will make this town and region run so much better. I often think of and region run so much better. I often think of the issues with the CBD. Look, if you can imagine the CBD without the GB Highway running down Wyndham Street and the Midland Highway without going down Friar Street and traffic calming on those two roads, it'd be little back streets like banana would be able to do as their main road, et cetera. So there's an awful lot in it and there's a lot of work on to this. And one of the notes there, I know it's the state government now the lead agency in planning and designing the upgrades of Ford and Wanganui Road. So they will have a major look at it, decide what they believe is best, and that's what will eventually happen. So I highly recommend it.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, councillor Patterson pretty much covered all of that in listing all of these new things that have sort of been thrust upon us. They haven't been, they've been thrust upon us and we haven't exactly kept pace with the traffic management that needs to go around these projects. For example, the super school is going to have three thousand students and two hundred staffs. The hospital upgrade, all the things that councillor Patterson mentioned. GB Highway intersections have been costed to, I think it's about fifteen million dollars we need, but it could be funded with a slice of the three point five billion dollar Roads of Strategic Importance Initiative. So it's another opportunity for the local members to come to the table and show us that we're a priority, considering that they're the ones who have thrust all this on us. So it's a bit of a bane in one way because it's crisis time and we need to work it out, but in another way, it's actually ironing out the kinks and getting a really strategic, good focus on how we're going to manage the traffic around the area and enlisting state governments' help to do this. So huge amount of work, fully in support.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Oriswari?
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Mayor. Just by way of clarification, the Ford Road, Wanganui Road is not done and dusted. It's still yet to be a decision made by this council because it's a council road. Is that correct, Mr. Harriet?
Thank you. It is still a council road. However, the strategic planning responsibility and the design and funding for the future of that road is being taken over by others, mostly the Major Roads Project Victoria, and they're incorporating Ford Road, Wanganui and the bypass all into a business case. So it's a split responsibility. Technically, the reserve is still council, but with its growing strategically importance, the, it's such, the project is of such a size that it can only be funded by federal and state governments, and that's why they're taking over the responsibility for the strategic plan.
Thanks, Mr. Harriet, for that clarification. But by the same token, I'll resume what I was going to say is that in our council term, the last four years, the decision in relation to Ford Road and Wanganui Road hasn't been taken and notwithstanding the fact that it's been, the strategic development's been taken over by the state government, ultimately any decision that's made. And I speak now in relation to the people that live in that area, who were quite active and vociferous in relation to their opposition to it. I wanted that clarification from you in relation to the fact that whilst technically, whilst the government has taken it over, technically it's still a council-owned asset and that any decision that will be taken in relation to that would necessarily come back to council.
Well, you're right in that it's still a local road and council has a decision-making capacity in relation to local roads, so I'll leave it at that and...
That's all I wanted to clarify, but thank you. If I could just go back and say that in general terms, this transport planning for Shepparton is a strategic document and demonstrates that this community will be dragged kicking and screaming into the future, judged by the amount of new infrastructure. And infrastructure will take enormous amounts of investment and Shepparton will be batting well and truly in the same realms of Ballarat and Geelong in the years to come because it has so much to offer. And this document that we have now really demonstrates the breadth and extent of what we're faced with going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Oriswari. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Sutton? Can you unmute, please?
Not really speaking for it, but I'm not really speaking against it either. But I'm not in favor of Ford Road and Wanganui Road as an east-west truck link. And this is because the area is growing and many more residential estates will be built in the future, which will result in a larger residential population living in this area, very close to this bypass. Bypass by the very name means bypassing areas that have a large demographic of residential buildings and population numbers. So I just think this road should be relocated away from this area to make it a real bypass. I am happy to support the motion, but I would like to see more consultation by the Department of Transport with residents and also to note the expansion of the residential blocks that are going to be to the north of this and the south of this bypass road. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sutton, for your comments. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor O'Kee?
I just thought it was worth clarifying because we didn't read out the recommendation. And I thought just to note that the council did receive a petition relating to the use of Ford Road as an east-west truck link at the ordinary council meeting held back in February twenty nineteen. So that's definitely part of the recommendation that that is considered, which is good. I mean, I suppose that's a problem sometimes. We don't read out the whole recommendation. There's some clarity in there that we've probably been considering discussion around. So I'm very pleased to think that the hard work from the residents of Ford Road has been identified in our recommendation and to be considered. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Kee. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Hazleman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, the old story about money talks and money's talking here as well. We were fairly predictable this was going to happen in relation to all of these roads being drawn into one planning process and one business case when, before the last federal election, the federal government threw two hundred and eight million dollars on the table, the first time of any, some serious money addressed towards the Shepparton bypass and linking it towards that east-west crossing. And if you look at the design of that, it's coming across on the Wanganui Road alignment and meeting up with the Golden Valley Highway. It's logical and practical that the Ford Road component of that is going to be constructed at some point in time. If you look at Ford Road as it exists at the moment, it is in major need of an upgrade as it exists at the moment because of the growth and development that's occurred. And I would suspect that that alignment and that upgrade would be very, very similar to what was being proposed some time ago when the residents were in angst about it. I'm pretty sure the residents want to see an upgrade to their road. What they don't want to see is that road being used by trucks. And that's probably an impractical expectation.
Thank you, councillor Hazleman. Would any councillor like to speak against, sorry, speak to the motion? I think only councillor Jovanetti is left. All right, no, that's fine. That's fine. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Okay, motion carried, unopposed. Next is item ten point three on page one hundred and eighteen, contract number one nine six four, Parking Enforcement Services. Yeah, so the recommendation is on page one hundred and eighteen. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Do I have a mover? Councillor Edum? Thank you. Could you please unmute?
I said I hesitated as I couldn't find the page.
One hundred and eighteen?
Eighteen, one one eight. Sorry, one moment. One twenty-one, one eighteen, okay. So that's, no, it's not page one eight or nine.
One one eight.
But here we go. Sorry, yes, I found it. Yes, sorry, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'll move the recommendation as the motion on page one one eight, that the council accept the tender submitted by Database Consultants Australia for contract number one nine six four, Parking Enforcement Services, Part A only, for a lump sum price of one million three hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty cents for the initial three-year contract, including GST, and want to authorize the CEO or the chief executive officer to sign and seal the contract documents.
Thank you, councillor Edum. Do I have a second? Councillor Patterson? Thank you. Councillor Edum, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, just briefly, this is a contract been awarded for our parking services. Obviously, we made a decision a while ago to change the way we operate our parking enforcement. The successful company, which I've just mentioned, which I can't find now, sorry, they obviously were deemed to be the appropriate tenderer, so I congratulate them. And I'm hoping that doing things a different way now, using an external company will hopefully ensure a better service and a better, well, better service all around for the community and for councils. That's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Edum. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, certainly would. Unfortunately, they're a necessary evil. We have to have in our town to keep people moving on and not park them too long in particular areas. And it's a funny one, but I'm sure all of us over the next several years will regret this motion because we've probably been booked by them. But it's just the path of life. We need them. They provide a service. Without that service, we would have parking mayhem in town. And yes, two years with a two-year option. Sorry, three years with a two-year option.
Yes, yeah. Okay, thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Councillor Summer?
Yep. With all the complaints we've had in the community about privatising car parking officers, I'm very surprised there's not more opposition to this. It goes against the grain of pleasant shopping experience. The idea was to invite people in and not find them, and we found that these external people are quite good at their job, which isn't necessarily a good thing. It could be at the detriment of our CBD. So it's the opposite of what we're trying to achieve. We want relaxed shopping. We're introducing free parking to off-street bays. So obviously, these guys are going to come in and find you for overstaying instead. So there's a lot I could say about times parking being free, but very short. Again, I think it flies in the face of the relaxed shopping experience, but I certainly wouldn't be, I think we should go back to how it was. Just the community didn't like it and personally, I don't think it's very good for business. That's my opinion anyway.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Sutton? Could you please unmute yourself?
Just a comment. I'd like to see locally a job because that's one of our, what should be a criteria. And I also would like to see them act as ambassadors for the town, and they could be the people that you go to just to ask questions and for a little bit of help, just so that instead of just being an official who's going to be booking us, they could also act like as a tourist person who could point them in directions of somewhere they can eat or et cetera, all that sort of thing. So I think if we start off with that sort of attitude, I think that would be very helpful and would be good for the community.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, I would just like to, I'll speak for the motion and would like to comment on what councillor Summer had mentioned, that I think there are two issues that councillor Summer has mixed up. Once the decision is made about, so there are two things about parking, either it's free parking or it's timed or it's paid parking. So this parking enforcement service is applicable to areas where the decision has been made to continue with the paid parking and also for free timed parking. So these are different decisions, and once the decision is there, we need someone, we need someone to monitor and enforce those decisions. So this is about enforcing parking areas. So that's something that I would like to clarify. Yes, councillor Summer, what's your point? So you are on mute?
Yeah, that's what I said. I'm just saying, I think you should go back to how it was before, before we privatised it. That's, that's all.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Edum, would you like to use your right of reply?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. I didn't think I'd have to, but there you go. I'm just a little bit confused. These people, as they're referred to by councillor Summer, will be enforcing the regulations that we set. Our parking enforcement strategy is clear. They don't do what they wish to do. They will be enforcing the rules as we make them, whether it's timed parking or anything else. So going back to the old way is no different. It's a different group of people. However, they enforced or were meant to be enforcing our rules as this mob bill as well, or this, sorry, not, shouldn't call the mob, but this company as well. There's no difference at all. They'll be doing what they're asked to do. And we've obviously kept the in-house part of this operation still in council, so we can keep good controls of the ins and outs financially. So I think it's a great outcome. I can't see how it could be actually seen as detrimental. That's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Edum. With that, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Those against? Motion carried. Councillor Summer, could you please unmute yourself?
Can we please just get a division on that one, please, Madam Mayor?
Okay, so will, those in favour? Councillor Sutton, councillor Hazleman, councillor Patterson, councillor Edum, councillor O'Kee, councillor Oriswari, councillor Jovanetti, councillor Abdullah. Those against? Councillor Summer? So the motion carried. Okay, next is item number ten point four on page one twenty-six. This is about proposed land sale, thirty R Florence Street, Shepparton. There's a recommendation on page ninety-six. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Jovanetti?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation on page one twenty-six as a motion. And that recommendation states that council authorised the publication of a public notice of intention to sell the land shown generally as lot on spire plan drawing number three oh seven four one oh, UD double O, being approximately two point six one eight square metres in area, which invites submissions from the public on the proposed sale in accordance with section two two three of the Local Government Act. And we authorise the CEO to undertake the administrative procedures necessary to carry out council's functions under section twenty-three of the Act in relation to this matter.
Thank you, councillor Jovanetti. Do I have a second? Councillor Hazleman? Councillor Jovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, just briefly, Madam Mayor. It's a pretty straightforward sale. Freedom Foods, who are one of our larger industrial companies here in Shepparton, wish to expand their business even further by building another warehouse. If they do that, they then require an exit route from their property out of, sorry, out of their property. And to do that, they would need to purchase a section of land from council. And what we're doing by moving this motion is approving that we sell that section of land to Freedom Foods to enable them to meet the necessary requirements of their expansion.
Thank you, councillor Jovanetti. Councillor Hazleman, would you like to speak to the motion? Thank you, councillor Jovanetti. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, Madam Mayor, it's been covered well.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, opposed. Next is item ten point five on page one twenty nine. We have a recommendation regarding development plan that gave us hundred make Isaac Road, McMooreton. Yeah, so that's, there's a recommendation. Do I have a mover? Councillor Jovanetti? Could you please unmute yourself? Councillor Jovanetti, we can't hear you.
Sorry, I'd like to move the recommendation on page one twenty nine. It states that council endorsed a submitted development plan under DP two oh two oh dash two.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Oriswari? Thank you.
I'll support the recommendation.
Thank you very much. Councillor Jovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. This recommend, oh, this motion relates to a a development by the Haven Group. The development by the, by the Haven will add much-needed social housing to our municipality. Some sixteen independent living units, twenty one and two-bedroom units for older people and five residential lots. To support this development, I believe that Haven will provide adequate staffing on an ongoing basis. I do understand that residents in the area were of belief the school was proposed for this area. But this has not transpired as St Mary's Parish has determined that the land is not required for school. The development complies with state planning policies to provide community care accommodation. Now, local policy encourages different types of housing that provides options, including affordable housing, and the land is in a residential zone. And finally, the Haven implements council's affordable housing strategy, which is Houses for People two thousand and twenty by providing specialised accommodation.
Thank you, councillor Jovanetti. Councillor Oriswari, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor. Councillor Genovini has covered it beautifully.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Hazelman, you go first, yeah.
You're not often able to go in front of councillor Patterson, so I'll take the advantage. I can understand the angst, if not anger, of residents nearby who bought property on the expectation that a school was going to be built on that site. Many of them possibly even bought with the expectation that their children would go to that school, which is the reason that they've invested in that area. And they must be feeling uncomfortable now that this process can change. Something else is being developed on that land and effectively they've got no appeal rights against it. They've lost, there is no objection rights to VCAT. It's effectively, it's a fait accompli. So this development will go ahead. We'll all say, yes, it's very much needed. But at the same time, you can't help but feel that the residents have been doubted in the process.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Patterson?
I really did wish I could go before councillor Hazelman because he summarised my feelings a lot. I've given this normal amount, enormous amount of thought. But yeah, there is legitimate reason that they built there because there's a sign up that said future side of a school. They've been doubted that way. The main overriding issue, I just feel so sorry to root and cop it again. We just continually have low-cost developments dropped in Shepparton with a lower price of of land over here. And I just think we, we cop more than our fair share. Having said that, whichever way I vote is going to make no difference. The whole thing is structured that even if we didn't give them a permit tonight, we automatically count granted in VCAT. The, the, the argument that it's needed is not an argument at all. It is definitely needed. So in some ways, I feel a bit of a traitor to the people in Rootland, but I have no other option. If I was to vote against it, it'd still go through and still get ticked off on every box. But I can understand they're, they're hurt and they're upset that, you know, they bought this land. There's several other houses being sold for social housing at the state. It's not a good mix. Again, it's a good reason to not be happy about it, but it's nothing we can do if I was to stand in the soapbox and beat a drum. It's not going to make one little difference. So therefore, with a heavy heart, in some ways, I agree to it. It'll be good for Root in some ways, but again, you know, we do some heavy lifting over here on these sort of developments. I don't believe it's fair and we should be looking at spreading the load more even.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor O'Keefe?
I thank you, Madam Mayor, and exactly my line up with councillor Patterson. And I perhaps as a council law was a little bit disappointed that we didn't get notification of this until fairly late. And in fact, it was a community member that raised it to me prior to us even knowing about it. But that's beside the point. But in saying that, I feel, you know, we should have been more engaged and involved in this project prior to it being, you know, put on the doorstep of, of our residents. So I think it's worth noting that we did do a fair bit of research. We did get the Haven to come in and really brief councillors on their, their actual business model. And it was really good. And I had really asked if they put that out into the community. Because one thing they did say is that at their other locations, and they do have other locations, that never had a criminal issue or police have to come onto the premises. And I think the perception from the community isn't often accurate to what the residents are going to be, you know, obviously within somewhere like the Haven. So it is, it is a much-needed resource to many people within the community. But just the consultation and the process, I feel, again, you know, council, you know, we did lack that connectivity to the community. And I was disappointed to think that, yes, I was actually told about this by a community member and that shouldn't happen. Yeah, and I do feel, I think, you know, if you've been told you buy a house, there's going to be a school across the road, your kids are going to be able to go to that school. And that was your reasoning for purchasing the land. That can be, you know, very disappointing when it's not what, you know, has happened as its result. So it is residential property, residential land, residential property, as councillor Patterson pointed out. It will, you know, obviously go through, but, you know, I do think we need to always be very, very mindful of the impact of these type of developments and make sure that the community that are impacted or community have a very good understanding of what this means and what the facility is, is going to be. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor O'Keefe. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? All right, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, opposed. Okay, so next is item ten point six. Greater Shepparton Economic Response to COVID nineteen package, stage two. There's a recommendation on page hundred and thirty eight. Would a councillor please move a motion? Councillor O'Keefe?
I thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move a motion that the council endorsed a stage two Greater Shepparton Economic Response to the COVID nineteen package.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Patterson? Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion? You're on mute, councillor O'Keefe?
Sorry, sorry about that. As we briefly touched on a little bit earlier tonight when we're talking about the budget. We talked about the importance of, you know, really supporting the community during COVID nineteen and the economic impact. What we can do as a council is extremely important. There's a list of many things there that we are doing to the community, to support the community. We'll be supporting, you know, the outdoor sports clubs, indoor sports facilities. We'll be supporting lots of pockets of community that are obviously getting impacted. So I think, you know, one of the main things is for those that can't be doing business as normal and they would normally be happy to be parking. We are compensating some of those fees and charges, which is really, you know, fantastic. So I think, you know, if you get a hold of the document, there's a lot of things listed there that's going to actually really support the recovery during COVID nineteen.
Thank you very much, councillor O'Keefe. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, the document will be on our website straight after the meeting. I would first of all like to congratulate our staff that have put an absolute enormous amount of work into this. It might look, might look that complicated, but it's extremely complicated as far as who's responsible for what, et cetera. So there's, there's weekends, there's long nights gone into it. I know from staff members that have put the heart and soul into this. And it deserves to have the heart and soul in it. My, my concern for this whole virus is, you know, it's not so much having a kick of the footy and playing footy, but a lot of these region clubs, especially football clubs, netball clubs. And I'll, I'll use Tally Group because I was involved in that personally as councillor Hazelman has been. It's not just a club where you go and it's had you and watch a game of football. It's a whole community revolves around that club. Now, they have training on Tuesday nights and Thursday nights have a guy come in and cook them all tea. They'll have a hundred people in there. Catang will have two hundred people they're training to on Thursday nights. It's a whole community. And all of a sudden, to lose that, they don't have another option to go to. There's nothing else in the town to go to. They lose all that. So, you know, the virus has had a detrimental effect mentally, a lot more than we believe, I, I understand. So I think it's very important that we situate these clubs so when they get over the virus, we can go straight back to doing, or they can go straight back to doing what I've done. And that is being a community and getting on with one another and meeting a neighbour and sitting down with a guy you haven't seen for a while. And that's what it's all about to me. It's about helping these community groups get back involved. I'm using sporting clubs as an example, but there's lots of other, other examples there. And that's where I see council's position. That's why I'm more than happy to support the two percent rating increase. Because a lot of this money will go because it's still costing us to mow law, mow footy grounds and do all the maintenance out there. All still has to be done. We have to still employ the people that do it. We can't sack them. And we've got to employ them. So the cost is still there to council. So soon as we hit the all-clear, the AB will be in terrific condition because it's been looked after by someone. And that club can start cooking teas on a Thursday night straight away and the whole new world exists. And that's why I'm so excited about this package. And again, I congratulate the people who've been involved and put it together. And it will be on, as I said, on the web, web page straight after the meeting tonight.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Adam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'm in agreement with councillor Patterson. Obviously, it's a very comprehensive package, actually. There's too many things to mention. I'm especially happy to see that some of the submissions that were made to the budget are actually addressed and covered in this response as well. As councillor Patterson said, it doesn't look like it's a lot of work, but there's a heap of work involved in, in unpacking each different community organisations, seeing what needs can be addressed. And as well, the, the two percent increase with the budget, obviously, you could almost say the major part of that excess money is going back into, straight into the community. It's definitely needed. It shows that we're thinking. And I'm sure this is not the end of it potentially. I'm just hoping we can get out of this COVID nineteen crisis quicker, as quick as we possibly can. But in the meantime, this package will certainly ensure that a lot of these organisations still exist at the end of all this. So I actually applaud the organisation for coming up with such a comprehensive package.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Jovanetti?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Adam actually started, but I do agree with him that it's great to see that the people who have made submissions in our budget process, they have been acknowledged. And we have listened to them and they are included in this package. As councillor Adam has said, it is quite a lengthy package. And we, we offer support to all sections of our community, whether it's business tourism or the communities as such. And one of the things I did like to see, which we had been contacted by members, is that particularly sporting clubs, as councillor Patterson mentioned earlier, reduction in rent by fifty percent for tenants of council-owned buildings or facilities from one July to the thirtieth of September. All lease fees waived for all sports clubs who lease council-managed buildings or facilities for two thousand twenty twenty one. All section eighty six committees of management of rec reserves and DLP owned committees of management of rec reserves reimburse for utility costs for a whole of twenty twenty one. And all ground hire fees waived for council-managed outdoor sports facilities, including their light charges for two thousand twenty twenty one. Now, they are all issues that were raised with us during the budget submission process. And it's great that we've been able to include them in this recovery package.
Thank you, councillor Jovanetti. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Yes, councillor Sutton? Can you unmute? Can you please unmute?
I can. Yes, sorry about that. Just endorse the other councillors' comments. And it's great to see that we're doing so much for our community. I especially like the Working Victoria initiative, which is creating an excess of two hundred jobs in Greater Shepparton. And also the great things happen here. That's going to be attracting a workforce and enticing other people to come and live in, in our region. A ten percent reduction on fees for class two and three food businesses, food and accommodation premises. And I think this is really going to assist our businesses to get back on their feet. So thank you to the staff for your hard work and let's see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? All right. Yeah, I would also like to say thanks and congratulations. It was, as all of you have noted, noted, it was an extraordinary effort. And councillor Sutton, you mentioned about working for Victoria. It was, it was amazing because it, it took this programme, more than around two hundred jobs actually have been created. And it happened only because council made an extraordinary effort during the height of COVID nineteen crisis to prepare a proposal of jobs for a state government and it was successful. So all these efforts are basically bringing opportunities and benefits to our community. And we are very hopeful that we will come out of this COVID nineteen in a very positive way. So good work. Thank you. With that, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, opposed. Thanks. Next is item, okay, sorry. So we'll now go to page number one forty two, item eleven. Reports from councillors, nil receipt. Reports from special and advisory committees, nil. Item number thirty, notices of motion amendment or recession, nil. Item fourteen, documents for signing and sealing, nil receipt. Item fifteen, councillor activities. There's a recommendation on page hundred and forty three regarding councillor's community interaction and briefing programme. Would a councillor please move a motion? Councillor O'Keefe?
I thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the motion that the summary of the councillor's community interaction briefing programme be received and the record of assemblies of councils be noted.
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe. Do I have a second? Councillor Adam? Councillor O'Keefe, do you want to speak to your, to the motion?
I thank you just very briefly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And it's, we've been doing things quite differently, obviously, during, during COVID nineteen. A lot of Zoom meetings and a lot of significant things happening across the community that would normally obviously have such, you know, great attendance. I mean, the Sorry Dave flag raising, I've been to that the last, you know, many, many years, particularly since I've been on council. And it's, you know, it's, it's such a shame that we've been having to miss, you know, these significant gatherings to support such important causes. But I think, you know, as a whole, we're doing a really good job. I think, you know, I've learnt a new way of doing things. I've connected perhaps more broadly than what I might have had the opportunity to do so. So there are some positives. But yeah, I just, I'm very much looking forward to getting back amongst the community and, you know, being able to celebrate, you know, lots of things and share lots of things and be supportive. So yeah, the list is getting shorter, we're noticing, but, you know, we're still doing the best that we can do under the circumstances. And I think we're doing a good job as far as doing our Zoom meetings, keeping our committees going that we're all involved in. And I think it's important to support the others and also congratulate, you know, many people across the community that have changed the way they're doing things. We're all doing that. And there are some positives, but I think definitely looking forward to getting back to the norm, whatever that means. It'll be changed, it'll be a changed norm. But there's certainly been some new learnings and some new opportunities.
Thank you, councillor O'Keefe. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? You will now go to the vote. Those in favour? Those in favour? Your motion carried, unopposed. All right, next is item 16. Page 145, urgent business not included on the agenda. Nil. Item 17, confidential management reports. There's a recommendation on page 145, 17.1, designation of confidentiality of information. There's a recommendation. Would a councillor please move a motion? Councillor Giovinetti?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation on page 145, section 892D of the Local Government Act, 1989. Council meeting is to be closed to members of the public for consideration of a confidential item.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Hazelman? We now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. So with that, we will pause our live streaming and we'll have the next item discussed in, as a confidential item. That's good. So we are back with our live streaming now. Item 17.4, designation of confidentiality of information report attachments. There's a recommendation on page 145. Would any councillor please move a motion? Councillor Giovinetti? And a second? Councillor Adam? This is a procedural motion. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. So with that, I declare the meeting closed at 8 past 8pm. Thank you very much. Thanks for joining us, everyone, and thanks to councillors.